The Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations now convenes its hearing. In accordance with the open government law, public notices for today's proceedings were sent to the media on Wednesday, March 5th, 2014, and again on Monday, March 10th, 2014. Notice was also posted on the Guam Legislature's website, beginning on March 5th, 2014. For the record, today is Wednesday, March 12th, 2014, and the time is now 9:31 a.m. The committee will hear and accept testimony, both oral and written, on the following item: Bill Number 264-32, introduced by Senators Dennis Rodriguez, Brett McCreary, Tom Ada, Rory Rispicio, Tina Mooney-Barnes, Tony Ada, Tommy Morrison, and Chris Duennius. An Act Relative to Prohibiting the Sale or Distribution of Electronic Cigarettes to Minors by Adding a New Subsection 6101 to Article 1 and Amending Subsection 6400 of Article 4, Chapter 6, Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated. I'd like to take time to acknowledge the senators who are with me today. I have my vice chair to my left, Senator Tom Ada, to my immediate right, Senator Frank Uggan. To the immediate left of Senator Ada is Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and to his immediate left is Senator Brett McCreary. The conduct of the hearing shall be as follows. Individuals wishing to present testimony are asked to sign in with the staff at the table. Please ensure that you indicate your support or opposition to the item for which you are signed in for. Unless otherwise decided by the chair, those testifying will be recognized in the order they signed up. Written testimony may be read. Lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimony should be submitted to the committee for photocopying. Testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the bill being heard. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of the author or any member of the panel is not permitted. No debate or rebuttal shall be allowed between two individuals testifying. Individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. The individual may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the panel. When speaking, please ensure the microphone is on. There's a small button right on the device. You just push it and the red light will turn on, indicating that the device is on. Individuals are asked to state their name for record purposes. And we will now begin public testimony on Bill 264-32. I would like to give the primary response to the bill Senator Rodriguez, an opportunity to make his opening statement.
Good morning, and thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good morning, and thank you all for being here. This legislation, Bill 264-32, is an act relative to prohibiting the sale or distribution of electronic cigarettes to minors. As we all know, these electronic cigarettes, which is commonly known now as e-cigarettes, are really unregulated here on our island. And even by federal law, there's few regulations that are currently in the books regarding e-cigarettes. The FDA is working on, you know, their regulations and the physician paper as well. There's a lot of studies that are out there, but none have really gotten to a state where it has been adopted by the FDA. There is some language that has been proffered by the FDA, and I'll leave that up to the health professionals to share that with us this morning. However, when there's a lot of unknowns, especially when it deals with the health of minors, for me, I think it's, and for the cosponsors of this legislation, it's better to err on the side of caution, to be able to protect our minors. And so what this bill does is essentially prohibit the sale and distribution of e-cigarettes to minors. And really, it was meant, as I worked with the stakeholders, the NCD Consortium, American Cancer Society, Public Health, the Guam Fire Department, and a lot of other stakeholders, you know, we've agreed that this would be the first, the start of a discussion of e-cigarettes. We know now when you run the plane, not only is tobacco smoking prohibited, but e-cigarettes as well is prohibited on the planes. And so we know that a lot of studies, you know, we have to wait and see where they stand. However, as I said earlier, when it comes to the protection of children and minors, this is the way that we would like to go and to ensure that we protect them. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Senator Rodriguez. Also to acknowledge my fellow senators who have joined us is Senators Chris Duennius and Senator Tommy Morrison. Senator Ada on the far left as well, Tony Ada. We do have indicated testimony in favor from three individuals. I do have one individual who indicated oral testimony, Peter Cruz, but you didn't indicate if it was in favor or against. Is Peter Cruz here? In favor or...oral testimony in favor? Okay, I have about five in favor and two not in favor. So let's go ahead and have the ones who are in favor take the table first, if we may. I have Ken Leon Guerrero, Chuck Tanner, James Gillen, and Peter Cruz. I'm sorry, also... Oh, Cory Chen has submitted written testimony, so only four. Thank you for joining us this morning. I have first on the list, Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero. If you can go ahead and state your name first for the record, sir, and you may begin.
My name is Ken Leon Guerrero. I'm here to testify in favor of Bill 264. I agree in principle with the bill, but I think it doesn't go far enough to protect the children of Guam. I'm here to testify that there is a sense of urgency about this bill, and we need to recognize e-cigarettes for what they are, they're cigarettes. And I've submitted written testimony, so I'll just sum up the 20 pages so that we don't take up too much of the committee's time on this. I'm seeing a lot of anecdotal evidence that backs up an assertion by the CDC, which did a research study and said that 90% of smokers were smoking before they reached age 18. And we have gone a long way to improve that here on Guam over the past decades as we've enacted smoking regulations, and we have seen the changes in our community that benefited from those regulations. But what I'm seeing now is with these e-cigarettes, they're making a comeback. Because in offices where people are not allowed to smoke, you see people smoking e-cigarettes. I've even seen people at GPOs sitting there in the walkway smoking e-cigarettes. But particularly, the thing that concerns me most is the children. And children, you know, they're gonna live forever, so they don't worry about things like that. It's incumbent upon us to take advantage of the lessons we learned when we were younger. And for those of you who were smoking when you were...how many people smoked when you were young? Raise your hands. Okay, a few. Willing to admit it. But what we know is that when we were young, we were gonna live forever. So we didn't worry about things like cigarettes back then. And what we found out later is by the time we got around to worrying about it, it was too late. The people who were smoking were probably gonna be fighting that battle for life. E-cigarettes is an easy way to get children...the primary target market for the smokers, because they are investing very heavily in their future profits of their business. Why else would they make chocolate flavored, strawberry flavored, butterscotch flavored inhalant if not to make it more appealing to children? The reason why this is concerning to me is I walk every day. And when I'm walking through the village, I'm seeing more and more children at the bus stops, in front of the village stores with their e-cigarettes. And that's why I think this is very important that we enact it. Because not only is the fact that it delivers nicotine the important thing, but according to the FDA, there is a toxic cocktail of chemicals that are included in this chemical solution. And one of them, which I found particularly disturbing, was diethylene glycol, the active ingredient in antifreeze. I documented my testimony in 2006 when over 700 people were poisoned by tainted cold medicine from China that had a hint of antifreeze in for sweetener. And out of those 700 people, 123 died. I didn't want to keep throwing them in there, but I'm sure you all remember a few years ago, there was dog food that was pooled because it had antifreeze in it, and baby formula that caused thousands of children to be sent to the doctor's office in the emergency rooms when it too was sweetened with antifreeze. So when do we think giving children and adults antifreeze through an inhaler is a good idea? Along with those chemicals, I can't even pronounce this one, but basically the most common effect of it is that it irritates the respiratory system and damages the liver. The next one, benzene, it irritates the lungs and airways and can cause internal bleeding, and in large enough doses can be fatal. Cadium, one of the most toxic elements known to man. And once absorbed into the human body, it accumulates through life. So what are we perpetuating here with these cigarettes? But a delivery mechanism that perpetuates inserting these chemicals into the bodies of our children. And at some point in time, we as a society are gonna have to deal with it. We're gonna be dealing with a different type of addict. Formaldehyde, lead, nickel, and the cocktail list goes on, and it's in my written testimony. But the reason I wanted to be here and testify today is I think that we should all acknowledge the fact that e-cigarettes are cigarettes, treat them as cigarettes, tax them as cigarettes, and maybe in the legislation, make provision for the advances of technology. Because just as we have an e-cigarette now that claims to be tobacco-less, but it has chemicals to simulate all the good and bad things of cigarettes, there are more products that are gonna come down the road, as we've seen with spice. When they tried to regulate spice out, what did they do? They changed the chemicals. So now we're not...they're technically legal again. I think we should amend the law to classifying cigarettes and cigarette-type products in any nicotine or simulated nicotine delivery system to be recognized as cigarettes and treated appropriately. That concludes my verbal testimony. You've got the 20 pages of my written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon Guerrero. Mr. Tanner?
Today, my name is Chuck Tanner. I'm the chair for the Policy and Advocacy Committee for the Guam Comprehensive Cancer Control Coalition, and also the Non-communicable Disease Consortium. You have our written testimony. I would just like to read it into the record. Dear Senators, thank you for sponsoring Bill 264-32. The use of electronic cigarettes for electronic nicotine delivery systems has steadily increased in the past couple of years. Its popularity can be attributed to how this product is being marketed in our community, that it is a better alternative to tobacco smoking, that it is safe, and that it is an effective way to quit smoking. According to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the use of electronic cigarettes among U.S. middle school and high school students doubled during 2011 to 2012. In 2012, an estimated 1.78 million students reported having ever used electronic cigarettes. 160,000 of these students who used electronic cigarettes had never used conventional cigarettes. The number is alarming since the impact of using electronic cigarettes on public health is still uncertain. However, a growing body of knowledge can already be shared. The World Health Organization has stated that the safety of these products and its efficacy to help people stop smoking has not been scientifically demonstrated. Electronic cigarettes contain nicotine, which is a chemical that has been proven to be harmful to children, nursing mothers, pregnant women, the elderly, and people with heart conditions. In fact, a nicotine cartridge of 24mg may cause acute nicotine poisoning when accidentally swallowed by a child. Non-smokers of tobacco products may be at risk for addiction to smoking electronic cigarettes. In addition, although electronic cigarettes do not generate smoke via burning tobacco, this does not mean it is safer to use than conventional cigarettes. Chemicals in electronic cigarettes have been fully disclosed, and there has been no adequate information on their emission. However, the American Cancer Society has stated that in initial lab tests, the FDA found carcinogens, chemicals that cause cancer, and other toxic chemicals in detectable levels from a couple of electronic cigarette brands and cartridges. And Ken did a pretty good job. He says 20 pages are very well at that. The Guam Comprehensive Cancer Control Coalition supports Bill 264. We believe that prohibiting minors from purchasing electronic cigarettes will discourage our youth from developing poor health behaviors and will limit their exposure to a new product whose impact on health is still unknown. We commend you for making the right choice for our people, and we encourage you and your colleagues to do the same. Please act now and pass Bill 264. Signed, Serena Mariano, Chair, and Renata Bordalio, Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Director Gillen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chuck stole my testimony. Most of the numbers I had were similar. What I want to admit is that, from a public health standpoint, we're way behind. We just didn't see this coming. But when we see now what's obvious, you know, they're recruiting a whole new generation of addicts, finding another way to get nicotine into people's systems, and touting it as a fairly harmless way to do so. There's some discussion that we've heard in the community about it being an effective tobacco cessation tool. It is not. American Cancer Society still doesn't recognize it as such. We find that where these e-cigarettes are available, you also have to have cartridges and depending upon the flavoring. You know, they get mixed in the back room somewhere. We don't know what's in there. We don't know what the strength is. I've prohibited e-cigarettes from being used in any public health building. I probably don't have the authority, but I did it anyway. I'm concerned about, again, it wouldn't be technically secondhand smoke, but you're sitting around somebody who's vaporizing this stuff, and you're gonna get whatever chemicals are floating around, and they're exposed to it. I just think I have a right to tell people not to have that around me. I think, well, this is the well-intentioned, you know, it targets the children. We have to be concerned about, you know, things like their brain development, effects of nicotine on that. We did the same thing with the alcohol argument. This does not go far enough. It's a tobacco product. It has been deemed to be a tobacco product by FDA, and I think we ought to tax it as such. Now, how we do that is another matter, because the e-cigarette itself is really not the tobacco product. It's the solution in the cartridge. So we've gotta figure out a way to do that. Because we're gonna be treating a lot of these kids. We find that there is an association between e-cigarettes and subsequently picking up smoking again. I was in Hawaii a couple of months ago. I couldn't believe what I saw. It was a fellow sitting on a curb in front of a restaurant, smoking a cigarette and using an e-cigarette at the same time. It was incredible. So, you know, this doesn't offer a safe way to deal with anything. And I think it's a very clever, insidious way to just recruit more addicts. And I think we've got to, if you're gonna use it, let's tax it so that we can afford to treat the people who are gonna need to have some help with this. You know, we've had the discussion about, you know, helmets and motorcycle riders, you know, where there is a public interest, because we'd be treating people with TBI, traumatic brain injury, at tremendous cost. And where simple things like wearing a helmet can avoid a lot of those kinds of injuries. I think we need to do the same thing. If you're gonna do this, pay for it, and pay a lot for it, so that we can build up enough funds to be able to help people with dealing with their addictions, because we're gonna have a lot. The FDA promised to have regulations in October. They didn't do that. They're promising now to have them out by spring. The problem with the, again, with the U.S. regulatory processes, there's gonna be a long comment period and review period, so we don't know when the final regulations will come out. This is not an easy one, because the science, even though we know somewhat what's in these, we haven't done any long-term studies. But there's no question, you know, that children cannot be exposed to these kinds of things. And I've heard stories of 14-year-olds getting these on, you know, as birthday presents on their 14th birthday. I've seen it in middle schools. So, you know, we gotta get ahead on this quickly. And maybe we can have the discussion on tax later on, but we really need to do that also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Director Gillen. Mr. Peter Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senators, good morning. Good morning. I said before, you're on behalf of the Non-communicable Disease Consortium Tobacco Control Team in giving our full supportive Bill 264-32. Originally known as Electronic Nicotine Delivery Systems, or ENDS, it was patented in 1963, but resurfaced as electronic cigarettes in about 2003. Its popularity in the last 11 years has brought sales over $1 billion in the United States, and is expected that those sales will collapse, eclipse, excuse me, over $3 billion this year. I would like to concentrate, or excuse me, locally, the surge of popularity has seen several businesses rooting up to fulfill this demand. The recent demand of electronic cigarettes has been accompanied by misguided information that in reality has the possibility of adverse health consequences for our island. I would like to concentrate on two important facts pertaining to electronic cigarettes. First, the main ingredient of the electronic cigarettes, nicotine. The Diagnostic and Stistic Manual, DSM, currently in our fourth edition, is typically considered the bible for psychiatric and substance-related diagnosis, clearly cites nicotine use disorder and nicotine-induced disorder. Nicotine use disorder specifies keys of nicotine dependence and its criteria with or without psychological dependence. The tolerance developed over a period of time creates the level of dependence the user experiences during any timeframe of abstinence. Clearly, the uncertainty of long-term use of nicotine just has not been established. Nicotine-induced disorder examines nicotine withdrawals and with the characteristics, syndromes, and symptoms that develop because of the use of it. Diathroptic or depressed moods, insomnia, irritability, frustration, anger, anxiety, difficulty concentrating, restlessness, decreased heart rate, increased appetite or weight gain are the major symptoms one can experience. Clearly, electronic cigarettes, simply put, is just another form of delivery to maintain nicotine in the human body. Because of the path electronic cigarettes has created, the second important fact that I would like to touch on is the concern of usage of underage. Currently, the CDC has estimated 25% of high school students have used electronic cigarettes. Big tobacco companies have found yet another method of delivery specifically aimed for the younger generation of society. The absence of regulatory monitoring has put this population at dire risk. Its accessibility, simplicity of operation, and endless amount of flavors, or commonly known as e-juicing, has made this product so popular with the youth. Locally, public school bus drivers have witnessed the surge of the use of cigarettes, both at bus stop locations as well as onboard during transport. The use of e-cigarettes at various schools of Guam Department of Education has administrations concerned. The Guam Department of Education is currently taking actions to control this epidemic. The absence of any regulation of the product of electronic cigarettes has questioned its use as replacement therapy. The inconsistency of the nicotine liquid put in any users in danger, especially used as a nicotine replacement therapy, or NRT. Currently, this device has not been approved as a cessation tool for assisting individuals wanting to live a tobacco-free lifestyle. Simply put, we currently do not know the long-term ramifications of electronic cigarettes or nicotine has on the human body. The two reasons that I would say they should clearly send a message is that nicotine can be as deadly as any form of tobacco products that are currently on the market. For this reason, on behalf of the Tobacco Control Group of the Non-communicable Disease Consortium, we strongly urge that you pass Bill 264-32 for a healthier, smoke-free, vape-free Guam. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, and thank you, gentlemen, for your testimony. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the members of this panel? If none, thank you, gentlemen, very much. Dr. Shea, I'm going to assume your testimony is in favor also of this bill. So if I may go ahead and ask you to please testify.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was called here by one of the public health advocates to kind of speak on behalf of the Guam Medical Association, as I'm president. But I can give a statement regarding the Guam Medical Association today. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. There's no general consensus from the medical community at this point in time. Although our medical associate consists of over 200 members, it's very difficult sometimes to get a general consensus without some more information. So I'm gonna defer that. But until such a time, we can submit a testimony as we gather more evidence-based research on this new product, and then we can submit as a testimony, hopefully before you're voted in this session. But I'm in personal favor of the bill. I'm in support of it. And I think this particular Bill 264, it's really quite simple. It basically calls for the ban of sales to minors, and the product is new. And it is enticing to teenagers. I mean, it's colorful, it's tasteful, and I think the basic essential is a no-brainer. I don't think anybody's gonna argue that anybody under the age of 18 shouldn't be purchasing these products. In fact, I was at the, again, a shopping center, and they were selling e-cigarettes there, and there is a very distinct sign right on the table that says, this is not a product to be sold to, you know, people who's 18 and under, or under the age of 18. So I don't think this bill is gonna receive much arguments regarding that. The argument that comes into play with some of my colleagues is whether or not... And I have read Dr. Felix Cabrera's testimony. The argument that's gonna come about is whether or not there is a benefit versus the risk, which is the less of both evils. And that's what Dr. Cabrera and public health have to deal with. Whether or not smoking is completely bad, we know that, for example, in tobacco cases, but whether or not e-cigarettes is worse than smoking tobacco. How do you balance that? Now, what I want to point out in the legislation is a real simple fact that in the legislation, in the intent of the legislation, and also in the legislative finding, it notes the line 7 to 9. It says here, they reference the e-cigarette as a tobacco cessation device. And some of the people who already testified on that has brought that point up as well. But, you know, to say that it's a tobacco cessation device at this point in time probably is a little premature. But be as may, though, perhaps in the future, the FDA may say that, you know, the technology is there, the innovation is there, but perhaps this device that's called vaporization of this product can be a vehicle for delivery of separate medication, maybe not nicotine. Maybe it could be delivery of an aerosol such as albuterol for asthma, for example. So these are the devices that have to go through the FDA. Now, if you're gonna pass legislation and regulate this product, as particularly in a taxation device, regulate as a cigarette, you have to kind of be careful too, because in the future, if it becomes a delivery device, not cigarette or nicotine delivery device, but it becomes aerosol for other medications, for example, then you may be taxing a product which could have some benefits other than, you know, delivery of nicotine or other vaporization devices. So I need to kind of point that out to you in particular. But the bill, as it stands, I think I'm in favor of it. I don't think that anybody argued that you shouldn't sell these products to minors. I also want to encourage the public health to do also a better job in educating the public regarding e-cigarettes or any kind of new product that comes out, and show us the evidence-based research, and not just within the realm of legislation. But you can pass any legislation you want. But the problem here is that you have to educate the public on these products. So that's the key here. And I think that's more of a benefit if you provide such an education. Because the bill is just a bill. It sits on the book as a bill. It's not gonna do anything. The last coming before I head back to clinic is that you gotta remember now, this product is so new, where as tobacco back in the 50s or 60s, doctors was endorsing a tobacco product. There was commercials with it. It took us a very long time for researchers to tell us that, hey, tobacco products causes cancer, causes other medical health issues. So this product with history is gonna, in time, is gonna tell us what's going on in the future. So it's gonna take some time. Now, there's something to be said with the big brother, the FDA. And I mentioned, I heard Jim Gillen talk with FDA. Our legislation is written here about FDA. You gotta be careful when you reference FDA in your testimony, because legislation regarding FDA, you can't be inconsistent with FDA. If you're gonna pass legislation or anything based on FDA, you gotta remember that, you know, your own legislature actually passed a bill that's against FDA advice. If I refresh your memory, if you recall marijuana, you know, you passed a bill that says that, you know, marijuana is a medication. FDA has said that marijuana is not approved as a medication. But that did not stop the legislature from passing legislation saying that it is a medication. So you gotta be consistent in what you do here as a legislature. Whether you're gonna reference FDA, you gotta be consistent with it. Not pick and choose. So you gotta be consistent in what you do here as a legislature, whether you're gonna reference FDA, you gotta be consistent with it, not pick and choose your product. And that's all we really have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Shea. Do any of the senators have any questions for Dr. Shea?
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Doc, for taking some time out of your your busy schedule to be here. Just, you know, when you referenced the line seven to nine, right? That that statement was, the intent there was that there's this belief out there that e-cigarette is a smoking cessation. And so if there's that belief, which I don't believe it is a smoking cessation, there's no, there's no evidence that that has come up and said that it is. But if there's that belief, then what this, you know, what the sentence is saying is that if there's that belief, then it shouldn't be the belief that it's safe for for minors. And so that's all that 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 line.
Right. Now, you know, I had this discussion with Dr. Cabrera just last night. And I I talked to him and, you know, I discuss these things with my colleagues and not argument per se, but he did point down an article recently published, I think in Lancet, just in recently September two thousand and three, where the Lancet actually compared e-cigarettes with nicotine patches, and they found some early results with smoking cessation reduction. Now, there are some studies that that I have read that came out and said that the, you know, the comparison and the benefit is very little. But I think what we need to be aware of is if you're gonna pass legislation regarding a product, perhaps you should pass legislation regarding the delivery of the chemical rather than not the institute of the device itself. Because that device in the future may have some medical uses, rather than nicotine. But like I said, it could be a device carrying other medications to get to the lungs for helping patients. That that's pretty much what I'm saying. But I think the study is still gonna have to be more researched. But then again, you know, if you're gonna reference FDA, you gotta be careful. That's in double A storage as well. And if you're gonna believe truly in the FDA, what they do, then you shouldn't be padding the bill marijuana, period.
I think we're on the same page.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Shea.
All right, thank you.
The next panel indicated their opposition to the legislation. I do have two individuals who signed up who wanted to present oral testimony. Mr. Evan DeRas and Ms. Beverly, I'm sorry, I cannot incarnate Sean. Please join us.
Hi, my name is Beverly Carnashon. I am the owner of Vaporize. I am pro for the for not allowing minors to vape. But I am not okay with the taxation of the product. You know, there's, there has been a lot of studies, however, the product has changed throughout the first two years. Initially, the juices or the liquids did have some ingredients, but they were not from the US. Majority of these were made in China, so that makes a big difference. The products that we do carry are from the US. They're pharmaceutical grade, made in labs, and they're also distill-free. Another thing is that they they opt to not even have nicotine. As but as far as IDing the minors, we don't sell to minors. But now whether the parents feel that the minors would benefit from it because they know that their kids are smoking, that's all up to them. So, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Beverly. And Evan?
Hello, my name is Evan DeRas. I own vape Guam. And, yeah, I, you know, when I came here, I actually didn't know what was what was going up. But just to let you guys know, since I opened up my my doors, I've always posted up, you must be eighteen or over. I follow the regulations just like the tobacco companies do or the stores that carry it. And I believe the rest of the, I can I can speak for the rest of the other stores that are that are open. We all agreed that we don't sell to minors before this thing ever came up. And yes, we've seen a lot of a lot of minors using the e-cigarette. But, you know, I think it's it's beyond our control. Their parents, I mean, any any youngster that comes into my door, first thing I ask is your ID. You know, if they come in with their parents and they, you know, their parents agrees to purchase it for their child, I got no control over that. The parent is there to purchase it. And, yeah, we we as a vaping community and the stores, we already regulated this even when we opened up. So we we already established that already. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for this panel? Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, sir, and and Beverly, yes. I want to thank you for for even before this bill becomes law, taking that proactive step in saying that we're not going to sell to to minors. This this bill is is very much needed because as we heard, that we still see minors vaping, right? And so now, as you say, that you you don't sell to them, but then they're getting it somehow. So this bill, what it does is that it prohibits the sale and also it prohibits the distribution to minors. And so that, I think, is important to have these safeguards in place, especially in 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 a time where the study, the evidence is still forthcoming. You know, and and really, I think this this whole discussion we're having here is not is not to impede in in an adult's desire to to want to vape, to want to smoke cigarettes. I think we've we've said that already. If you want to smoke cigarettes here, the taxes have gone up. There's discussion about taxing it here, and I hear you. I think there's more discussion that that needs to go into this, but this is a first start because really, e-cigarettes and vaping is unregulated. We hear a lot of business owners and and also individuals who are in the malls or at supermarkets saying they feel offended, you know, when someone in front of, next to them or in front of them vapes, right? And so we gotta take all this into consideration, but also knowing what the the rights of people are to who wish and desire to to vape. Yes, I look forward to working closely with with you. I I I consider you an important stakeholder in this as well. And so I thank you for for coming here this morning. Thank you.
Any other senators? Senator Duenis. Beverly, Evan, I think.
Before they leave, yeah, I wanted to take the opportunity once again to join the sponsor in thanking you for coming forward and understanding the issue better. I I just want to say that having worked with members who are here today of the Peace Council and a lot of organizations that have come together to protect our young people from things that they don't foresee in the future as being harmful to them because of, you know, as as one testimony said, they're gonna live forever. We all know that feeling. It's a long time ago since I was young, but I I remember thinking that I was gonna live forever. And I I don't try to use my personal testimony a lot of times, but I will say, as Ken mentioned, Mr. Leon Grillo, I was willing to admit that at seventeen I became a smoker, and it took me eight years after that, a battle all the way through to try to quit because I was an athlete and I knew what it did to me. And I and I saw the ill effects in the future of what it did to others. And thank God, I got very sick. I say, thank God, I got very sick and basically almost had pneumonia. And because I was without nicotine for a month, I was able to quit because of my illness. And 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 I said, like I said, I I wanted to address the issue of the taxation. I understand your perspective from a business person's point of view. I just ask you to understand that as the research goes forward and if if that comes to be in terms of what we have to do along with what we've done with the other products, please know that that is intended to go forward and provide opportunities and prevention programs so that young people have a fighting chance against what was stated here, the huge marketing campaign that goes forward. You're selling to adults. You're willing to sell to adults. You're willing to let adults make a decision. That's completely understandable, and I'm with you on that. But when we go down this road and and see what national standards put forward and see how we have to battle this from a public health perspective, and we all know the end stages of what happens even when adults make decisions about this type of a product and products that may lead to tobacco use as well. As a government, we have to act responsibly as well, and we have to make sure that we may, right now, it's proven. And if you if you'll take the time to research with the Peace Council, you will see that the price increase and taxation of tobacco has brought down, especially amongst young people, usage exponentially. Now, of course, adults will make a decision when they become an adult, but that will not create addicts otherwise who who are gonna spend the rest of their life fighting this 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 difficulty. And and then, once again, as many senators who have stepped forward and done controversial things like that when it comes to taxation, public health, the hospital, and others, all of our choices in life, they end up with managing our 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 life issues and health issues. But this one is very controllable, and so what happens with that tax dollars and and the like when the government enters into this is to spend money in those institutions to try to take care of our people eventually when when the eventuality of of the cancer takes over and and they succumb. So I I just want you to be mindful and understanding that when the government does do this, it does it for the full benefit of trying to, first of all, prevent our young people from that addiction, lifetime addiction. And the other thing is to make sure that we can do health maintenance going forward. So, but thank you for coming, and I understand your business perspective. And I thank you once again, joining the author, in thanking you for being proactive and not waiting for a law and putting up a sign and not selling to minors. I hope you continue, and I hope you to, I hope you continue to encourage your competitors and your co-businesses to follow your example and make sure that it's a clear message to young people, this is an adult product. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duenis. I would also like to join all of my fellow senators in thanking everybody for their interest and their participation today. As we move this bill forward, I'm confident that the author will work closely with everybody who has expressed an interest here today, and the committee will work with him as well to make sure that all of those interests are fully vetted and incorporated in the final product that reaches the floor of the Guam Legislature. If there be no further individuals wishing to testify, we'll go ahead and have Bill 264-32 officially heard. The committee will continue to receive testimony on all items heard this afternoon. Please address any written testimony to the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, and may be submitted via email at senatorsonicholas@gmail.com or hand-delivered to the legislature's mailroom at Suite 203 in the main legislative building, 155 Hester Place, Sagat near Guam. Thank you for your attendance and participation at today's hearing. This is now adjourned at ten fifteen this morning. Thank you very much.